Okay. Good to see you, Rick.
Good to see you.
Good to see everybody. Good to see everybody. A minute takes forever, doesn't it? Okay. This meeting of the Richlands Town Council will now come to order. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again for the opportunity to meet, to do the business for the town of Richlands. We pray for your grace, your wisdom, your guidance, and we pray that all the decisions that we make will be in the best interest of all the people of this community and all the people that we affect. We thank you for this beautiful spring day, and we're gracious and grateful for everything. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counsel, you have before you an agenda. We are now on Roman numeral four, but there are, I think, we need to add under three. I would ask for your indulgence here. We need three A, Roman numeral three A additions or deletions to the agenda. So I will ask first for a vote of council. Is there a motion to add Roman numeral three A additions and deletions to this agenda?
I'll make that motion.
There is a motion. Is there a second? Jan makes a second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask a roll call vote, please, Susan.
Doug.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Jordan.
No.
Jan.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
The vote carries five to one. Thank you, counsel. Okay.
Actually, on a, for a special called meeting, it needs to be unanimous.
Okay. Thank you very much.
To add anything to the agenda.
Okay, thank you for the correction there. The motion does not carry, it is not unanimous. So we cannot add or delete to this agenda. Thank you for the correction and help, Mike. Okay, so we're going on to Roman numeral four. Closed session for, everybody with me? Okay. Okay. We'll, okay, you guys ready? We'll go into closed session, are you okay with that? Okay. So we have Roman numeral four, closed session for personnel pursuant to code section 2.2-3711A1 and for... Wait a minute. Let me read it. Code section 2.2-3711A1 and for FY '24 power cost projection contracts and negotiations pursuant to code section 2.2-3711A6. I need a little help here. Okay, for personnel, okay, it's for personnel. 2.2-3711A1 and power cost projection slash contracts negotiations pursuant to code section 2.2-3711A6. All right, is there a motion to go into closed session for these two code sections?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay. There being no discussion, I would ask a roll call vote, please, Susan.
Doug.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
The motion is unanimous, thank you, counsel. We will now move into the conference room, thank you.
For council to come back into regular session.
I'll make that motion.
Rick makes the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Gary makes a second. Any discussion on this motion, simply to come back into open session? Okay. Roll call vote please, Susan.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Now, we need a motion to certify that each member of council did not discuss anything other than closed session for personnel pursuant to code section 2.23711A1 and for FY 24 fiscal year 24, power cost projection contracts negotiation pursuant to code section 2.23711A6. Is there a motion to certify that nothing was discussed other than those codes?
So moved.
Laura makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Gary makes a second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask a roll call vote. Thank you, Susan.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is unanimous. We are all, we're back into open session and we are certified. Okay, so we have next on our agenda Roman numeral six. Okay, we have no action to report at this time, by the way. Roman numeral six. We have a Zoom with Mr. Sam Lippman to discuss possible grants for electricity. Okay. Frank, is he on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay, Rod Curry. So I'm Sam Lippman and I apologize. I'm sitting backstage in my car. I'm on a trip here and none of my hotspots work, so I called in. I had a bunch of slides, but what I'm going to do is give you as much information as I can. We talked a bit and I talked about why I'm here and then I will be very happy to send you the slides and go with it, okay?
I'm sorry, Sam. Hold on, Sam?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Rod Curry. I'm the mayor and all the members of council here, Laura, Jan, Jordan, Rick, whom I think you've talked to, maybe Jordan, and also Gary and Doug. I want to introduce us and I am understanding, are you not able to show your slides?
I am not able to share these. I cannot, the only thing I'm on, well, they get on Zoom itself except through the phone.
Okay, that's all. I just wanted to be clear of what we're doing here. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't share them here, but again, I can read the slides and my notes and it probably gives you the information that you need. And then again, I can always share the slides with you, you know, send the slides to you. Very happy to do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I apologize not to do that. But I wanted to, okay, so I wanted to begin by saying this will be an informational presentation for development of a solar generating system with the goal of significantly reducing the purchase of outside power as a result of net savings for the town by not only reducing the electrical supply charges but service charges as well. And I want to talk about, a little bit about who we are. We are 501(c)(3) corporation, which is basically ICAT, which is a company. We are a social enterprise renewable energy company that works exclusively with low-income communities. We have a vast experience working with all levels of government and base utilities. In fact, for some of these utilities that we have, we are programmed, we run the programs. We are a one-stop shop. We do everything from development to building. We have more than 100 employees and growing. Besides providing full-service project development, we have fully staffed public health and emergency department. That's going to be important to you in terms of the incentives that we're going to be going out for you. We also have something called the CCL Fund, which is a sister company that provides low-cost construction and long-term debt financing for our clients. So just a little bit, our team, and you don't see this in the slide, but we have a quite experienced team, but I want to just give you a, just a, 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 a sentence about myself. I was 25 years ago developing natural gas generating assets for GE Power during the utility deregulation days. In 2009, I was treated by a large solar developer out of Belgium and since then I have held various positions with manufacturing, financial and development companies, the director of development and CEO. So let's talk about potential benefits and incentives available to build a solar generating plant. The biggest driver is the Inflation Reduction Act passed on August 2022. Basically, that act increased the investment tax credit allowable from 26%, which was going to slide down to 22% this year to a base of 30%. It also included another layer of investment tax credit incentive called carbon bonus credit. Now, adding to, so adding to the, the bonus investment tax credit, which should be able to garner up to a 50% investment tax credit. And I'll break that down in a moment. Another feature of the investment tax credit is the nonprofit, it's not for nonprofit entities, able to monetize tax credit. So in other words, in the solar investment tax credit arena, for only profit-making companies that actually monetize cash, makes sense, right? But in this case, there's a new provision that allows municipalities to receive cash and move additional tax credits if they can't possibly do this non-profit entity. It may be easier for towns to own their own solar cells instead going to a third-party partner, special partner. In other words, you can take the money yourself. But other grants are available, grant prizes, loan forgiveness, loan sharing, low-cost financing, opportunities for the municipality. This represents a second layer of benefits outside of the investment tax credit, which means there is a lot of competition and limited allocation. If I, therefore, I only really focus on the, in my assumption, the investment tax credit and create a financial model that is certain and predictable. The other benefit, and this is actually required, but we, as a team, we have a community workforce training program for all of our projects. This is a requirement for a lot of the funding and can make good jobs for the community. So in other words, community gets involved in this thing as well, from the nonprofits, from the job funds, and these are all good, these are all good jobs because they are, they are based on prevailing wage. So let's break down what I think that's 50% investment tax credit looks like. It looks, the base credit is 30%. Everybody gets that. In addition, you are eligible for a 10% energy community credit. And I think I listened to your battery folks the other day, we talked about energy community. And then we are going to help you out with a 10% investment contract. So again, what is the energy community by definition for the LTCs? The energy community is an area where a coal-fired power plant has closed since 2010 or a coal mine has closed since 2000. Or a metropolitan, a non-metropolitan, statistical area where 21.7% or more direct employment. Or at least 25% of local power companies related to traption and processing of coal. Well, obviously, you qualify in that. What is the municipal contract? That is a required percentage of U.S. products to use in a solar project. And outside of 45% for all parts to deal with the construction in 2025, and we will meet that requirement by, by basically only using those products. So we look at, these are the goals of these projects by using, looking at two financing strategies. The first financing strategy, well, before we say that, I say that, no matter what the financing strategy is, the idea, the goal is to save money for the town. The solar generating system is always diesel, it generates power for less than what is currently and particularly and particularly being spent on electricity, supply, and P and B, and, and distribution service. So yeah, what I'm trying to discern here is what is the best solution for financial, should be a power purchase agreement, or should be how own the project? So we define a power purchase agreement. A solar power purchase agreement is a financial arrangement in which a third party developer or investor always offers to maintain systems, and the host customer agrees to purchase the system's electric output from a third party provider for a predetermined price, which is really a lot like what you're doing with the utility you're working with now. So the advantage of financing to a solar power purchase agreement is obviously there's no capital outlay or no long-term debt if you own the project. There's no operating maintenance responsibility, a liability. The really great benefit is you only pay for the solar generator. In other words, if you have, if you own a system, it's obviously you have payments to make every month. Every, and, and if you don't own the system, then you only pay for the power producing, if you're producing power and, and a lot, um, you know, if the fund doesn't show that, okay? Um, the other thing that is, that is the advantage of any project, says is it's a long-term contract. We, uh, municipal projects are less challenged when there's a long-term fix for costs and no fuel charges or P and B risks. So basically, our contract is 25 years, which fits the warranty of most solar plants. And all the advantages, of course, the job that our team talked about, energy resiliency, which is basically adding power to the grid so that the, the power becomes stable and cost-effective, and of course, energy requirements. You have the ownership, all things being equal, the, the return on the benefit should be highest with ownership, uh, since there are no third-party investors in there taking their profits. The other advantage, and, and all the other advantages are the same as it is in a power purchase agreement, but the advantage that I see for going towards the ownership side is that you can't be eligible for these incentives that we talked about unless you own facilities. So, um, you may have more incentives than we do, and we have to figure out what is the best way to handle that situation as well. By the way, interrupt me anytime if you want to ask a question. For a little, for mutual feasibility analysis, and, you know, since they don't have any electricity consumption of tariff data from the town, I need to make some assumptions in order to analyze the feasibility of the solar project and value of it, a reasonable prediction. The first assumption was the size of the system. We use a five-megawatt AC system because that is the, basically, the largest single, and the largest single system allowed to be eligible for the bonus investment tax credit. And we, uh, we, that generates about $10,700 out of the kilowatt hour in the first year. And we determine that by the, um, uh, using a, a few deep system analysis, which is a, which is kind of the gold standard for, for analyzing, uh, discent radiation in, in certain geographic areas. The other thing for, for analysis was, uh, again, we use 25 years, it's 1% annual energy escalator. And I, of course, you do historical information for, uh, project, the electricity costs over the last 20 years, and that 1% is a very conservative number, and I can share with you some of the research I did. Uh, the other thing that we assume, but, but here is that it is no land, that you will provide the land to them. Now, that might be not a correct assumption, but usually, people are only just kind of moving in a different perspective. 50% IP credit, we talked about that, no more. I didn't allow for any other tax bonuses, grants, low-cost loans. The other thing that we talked, this is an awful, is S-3000, REX, I mean. You are eligible as a municipality for solar renewable energy credits from the PJM system. It's going about 2 cents, uh, uh, kilowatt hour now, but it's just evolved from that. I didn't want to, in there. Again, just to be conservative, I wanted to give you the risk case scenario. We talked, um, the other thing that we need to be done, and we also assume root connection costs, and I want to talk about the root connection test, the root connection study. We have to perform root connection study to determine what the upgrades that we need as a substation or the three-phase distribution line. It goes three months, and when you inject any power that's just, we don't want it to cause an issue to the system. I would say some reasonable costs, and we could argue what those costs are, and also, we, we talked about the feasibility charges as well.
Sam, can you hold one minute, please?
Yes, I'm holding. Anytime you want.
Okay. Members of council, are there any questions at this juncture for Sam? Sam, it's not exactly easy to hear. I'll be honest with you. That's for me. I can only speak for me. But I would ask council members, any questions at this point? I'll start to my left. Laura?
Yes, sir, I've got a few questions. Excuse me. The first one would be the interconnection study. What would that cost us as a town?
If I heard you correct, basically, the interconnection study is a, um, it, it, or the, the, you inject a certain simulated, um, kilowatt into the system to see what happens to the, happens to the substation, and that's the simple explanation, because it's supposed to be safety zone or whatever. And we have to hire, since you don't have an outside utility, we hire somebody to do that study, who is, who is a qualified utility engineer. Sometimes that cost can be minimal, but sometimes, I allow $100,000 per megawatt, a half million dollars for upgrades in my, in my, um, uh, in my feasibility analysis, okay?
And that cost would be to the town of Richlands? Not really. I'm, I'm asking a dollar amount, like, even if you can give me a ballpark range, dollar amount, what would that study alone cost the town of Richlands?
Oh, it would cost, uh, and we paid for that study. That cost around $5,000, the initial, the initial application to the study, and the study can raise maybe from $25,000 to $50,000.
And...
They're quite, they're quite, um, quite complicated. They, there's a feasibility, it's impact study. So, yeah, but I include it in the, in my assumption, and by the way, I wanted to think you, what it came out with, like, and before we get to the next question or even the rest of the questions, um, because I took all this information and created my own model, and we came up with an 8 cents a kilowatt hour cost, um, which is, as far as I understand, is less than even your P and B or your service charges, as a line here, supply, if I'm correct. And please, um, if I'm not correct, correct me, okay? So I took all that, including the connection cost, put in all my assumptions, and I came out with a 25-year, 8 hours, at 8 cents a kilowatt hour, all, all in.
So the interconnection study would cost zero for us? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, we, we, we pull that into the, the model itself, in other words, we paid for the interconnection study. That's part of what we do, um, when you sign it, and I'll get to that point, when you sign a memorandum of understanding, um, we start putting our resources together, and we start doing the interconnection study, the environmental study, and any other applications that it's on us to do that.
So just, just so, I'm understanding, just a simple yes or no, is this going to cost us anything for the study?
Zero.
Okay. Next question. If we were to do this, how long, from start to finish, would it take our citizens to see savings with generating solar power?
Uh, we'll tell them the big question. Um, we'd like to say, real fast, let's say, that the way the supply chain is, and what we're trying to do here is, we're trying to gather more grants all the time, just to actually buy the project. But right now, if I was to give you a statement of supply chain and building and all that, I'm going to say a year, year and a half.
So after a year and a half, our citizens would see savings on their electric bill?
Yes, because we have to start generating the power, right?
Right. And what additional costs would that be for the town of Richlands in building anything? What cost is that going to be to the town?
Well, again, I, I think, I think the idea is, if you choose the solar power, uh, okay, and this is, I think this is the gist of the thing I wanted to say, and this is a great question for that. Under a power purchase agreement, the only thing is the energy. Okay? You always don't own the equipment, just pay the energy. So the answer would be zero, actually, okay? And the fact that you're doing, you know, except that you're still doing the same distribution you would combine it from the outside source. So if you buy from Appalachia Power, it goes to your substation, and you distribute it from that point, if I got this one correct. So zero that way. If you buy this stuff, what we're trying to do is keep the contract sustainable so that we get enough grant money, we can, if we get you down to near zero on the equipment, then it's worth you owning the equipment. You do not pay any money for it, okay? Does that help? Did that answer your question?
Um, it does. Uh, we've got a member of our electrical committee here, and I would like to ask Mr. Cook if he has any questions or comments before I finish with my questions.
The only comment that I have is that, the sense that I get...
Shay, you want to come up and speak so he can hear you?
Sure. I, I don't think the format of this briefing is particularly effective. I have difficulty hearing half of what he's saying. There's no slides to present along with it. Uh, I, I don't find this to be particularly helpful. The concept of thinking out of the box and taking advantage of, um, you know, budgetary, federal budgetary changes and tax credits, those, they're out there. I know they exist, and I know opportunities exist, and, and I have some sense of excitement about what this gentleman has to present, but I'm just kind of lost, and I don't think that this is an effective way to present this information, much less for the town to be able to make a decision in any, any meaningful way on it. And I say that not to minimize the value of anything this gentleman's presenting. I, I couldn't even, I, I don't even know who he is. I don't know what organization he's with, because I've sat out here, and I can't, I can't hear. And so it's just as, as basic as that.
Thank you, Shay. Thank you. Laura, anything else?
No, mayor.
Can I say something? Can I say something? That makes me, I, I agree with you. I agree with you. I think this, uh, this is not the most effective way of presenting this. I, and I, I'm kind of distraught that, 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 that you, that you feel this way and that you are receiving it this way. I really do. Okay? Because I have a lot of good things, and I'm very excited about this.
Sam, thank you. Shay's point is well-taken. I want to say, as the mayor of this town, and a citizen first, uh, it is difficult here, and I've already stated that, it does not diminish you nor your company in any way. Simply the dissemination of information is difficult on this very evening. So I would defer, uh, just, may I defer to Jan, she was next, okay, Shay?
I just wanted to add.
Yes.
What, I, I do not mean to minimize anything this gentleman has to say or the value of the information. I think it, it's frustrating because I believe that there are things that we should consider that he has to present. The difficulty is, is just the pure mechanics of transferring this information. It's, this is not an effective way to do that. And you know, it's 2023. You know, we could probably get, you know, on, use these screens and use FaceTime and get more than what we're getting right now. So I, I would just like to have another opportunity to have this information, maybe in a more meaningful format.
Thank you, Shay. Jan, any questions?
Any suggestions here?
Sir, I couldn't hear you.
I'm an old school guy, and if, if you would like it, I would be so pleased to come down there and do it in person.
Uh, I suggest, hold on, Sam. Uh, I suggest that's a plausible thing to do, but with respect to all members of council, I've asked one member for questions. Everyone else should have the same turn. So if you will please hold. Jan?
What has been your success rate in applying for these grants?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question again. Please, please.
What has been your success rate in applying for these grants?
We are one of the leading grant, um, successful people in, uh, in the, in the country. We do a lot, the low-income, we're, we are registered with the DOE and all the major governments. We run programs. We have a large grant writing system. Uh, so this is one of our biggest strengths. Uh, a lot of the stuff we do is not only with solar, but all the energy efficiency stuff.
Anything else, Jan?
So, yeah, we're very tuned in with, with, with these programs.
Not at this time.
By the way, just, just to tell you, we're, I'm on a trip right now. We're doing several of the tribes and their grants, and we're handling several of them here. We've been working with a buddy here to put these programs together. It's very similar in that some of them have their own system, and we're, we're bringing them the grants for their systems as well as the investment tax credit, which is kind of the same one.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Jan? Jordan?
So just two quick questions. What is the average-sized city or town you work with?
Well, um, who, 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 a lot of our, this is, is world-type communities. It's, uh, not necessarily municipalities themselves, but we work with local co-ops. But you know the, the, you know that the structure is similar to a union in that they distribute power to their members. And so I don't think we deal with major cities, except we do a lot, how we deal with major cities is we do a lot of energy efficiency with multi-family units, low-income, low-income units, and that tends to be in urban areas.
Okay.
But what you're doing, yeah, if that makes sense, yeah.
It, it does. I just have one more question. What are some of the tertiary economic benefits, or like job creation, that comes along with solar that you've seen in your experience?
Well, with long-term, I'm not sure, long-term, because as you know, the long-term's going to be your savings to the community
Of course.
into your members. Um, but as far as, uh, you know, this, I think the solar project, it's a construction, right? There's very little maintenance afterwards. Uh, there's O and M contracts that you have, but really, there's not a lot of maintenance that goes with that. So basically, it's, it's construction, and of course, it brings, um, revenues to the community during the maintenance, that means it's very expensive.
So are there any special certifications, like our linemen could get to be certified to work on these special solar converters or panels? Would that are beneficial to the marketplace?
Do they get certificates or do they have certification? Do you ask me whether we can get them certification or... Are you asking whether we can get them certification, or do they need to?
Well, I'm asking if that's a marketable skill that we could use to attract workers from out of town to come here and get trained on it, and then they do what they want with that afterwards, a benefit, if you will. Have you seen that in your experience?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, and this is what it's for. It's, it's not a one-stop thing. It's for, the idea of them to be trained so they can go on and, and have a career in this if they need it.
Okay. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay, Sam, next is Rick Wood. Rick?
Sam, I've talked to you quite a bit. I'm going to give Shay your phone number, and let him give you a call, and maybe y'all can talk, and, because he's on our power committee. You didn't tell him what all-
I did.
Sam, you haven't told him, like, what, what all y'all done. We've talked quite a bit, me and you have. He's worked in Mexico, he's done whole towns in Mexico, not for the town, but for the individual It's kind of different which state you're in, to what they regulate on. And they do have seven grant writers that works on this all the time. And the deadline on getting the grants in is when, Sam?
Did you ask me a question? I'm so sorry.
I did. When's the date for the, for the getting the grants written and get them in?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. You're talking about, you, uh, the grants are starting to open up right now, and, and basically, a lot of the first rounds are being, are actually being closed in Ju-, and now it's been pushed to about July, beginning of July. So, we want to get things started, obviously, as fast as possible. First, get the best, get the best deals, and get, get the least competition to work with.
Right. That's all I've got, Rod. I mean, I've talked to him quite a bit. I think he's going to have to come and see us or something for us to work out, but, I mean, he's got a great thing, he can help us a whole lot. I mean, I've talked to him hour after hour after hour for days, so I have spent a lot of time talking to him, and they are a nonprofit organization.
Thank you, Rick, for your research and your questions. Next is Gary Jackson, member of council. Gary?
Hello, Sam. Hey, I'm with Rod there. I wish you'd had the slideshow to where we could have followed along. I'm having a little difficulty hearing and being able to, I know there's some study analysis still got to be done, to find out what we have and everything, but I look forward to listening to the presentation at a, another format at another date, if we can work that out.
Thank you, Gary. We'll talk to you about that at the end of this presentation, Sam. Next is Councilman Doug Ratliff. Doug?
Hello, Sam. Can you hear me? Sam?
Hello?
Uh, can you hear me?
Okay.
Um, I've always felt that Richlands has an advantage that not many other communities have, and that would be, excuse me, we're sitting on more gas than, as much gas as anybody in the United States. And what I'm wondering, you've sort of zeroed in on solar, are there grants for gas? Because Mexico, they've got sun, a lot of sun. Everybody has a lot of sun, but not everybody has natural gas. And I always thought that was the way to go for the Richlands community. And what I'm wondering, are there many grants out there, or do you work with grants that work on gas, natural gas?
Okay, are you talking about other than other fuels in this case?
Yeah. Well, I'm talking about gas-fired-
Yeah. You do have natural gas there, which is an advantage over some of the propane guys we have out here. We do a lot of E-pumps and all that. I'm, actually, my, the guy sitting next to me, this is the grant guy, he's, he's phenomenal. We do everything in the house, you know, weatherization, and all the other things you could possibly do for, for lobby and, and, you know that system for it well. I'm not sure if it was a natural gas, hold on for a second. It didn't seem a lot of natural gas, but they have good incentives or other things they can do there. So, I'm just hearing, is you, can you still hear me?
Uh, yes, yes, sir.
Yeah. I'm going to give you the, if you want to answer this question, it's phenomenal, which is my, it's, it's ahead of our grant and physical development. We just pulled this into the car here. Hold on for a second.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, sir.
Um, so you're asking about incentives for buildings that have natural gas, is that correct?
Correct. I feel that we have an advantage that not many other communities have, and we should use that advantage. That's my feeling.
Yeah, absolutely. So, most federally funded weatherization programs through the Department of Energy, they actually, most of the upgrades they do when it comes to heating, is really high-efficiency natural gas. It's often very, very cost-effective, and if the goal is to lower the energy cost for the end user, it's a very cost-effective way to do it. You can also work with the utility companies, they have incentives for, for high-efficiency natural gas devices, because a lot of folks, you know, like, it, I'll give you my example, it's like, I have this in my house right now, I have a, a natural gas water heater and a, a furnace, and they run for a long time, well past their useful life. Mine is thirty-something years old. And I'm paying a lot more than I should. And if you get higher-efficiency equipment, if you, if you do that, which there's a lot of money to pay for it, both federal money and utility money, and even state and local money, you can cut costs for heating down a lot. It's actually probably cheaper to cut down costs that way than it is to electrify. Electrifying your proper, a building will be, will get you to be lowering costs at the end of the day, but it also costs more to do so. So, if you're really looking to get the most bang for your buck in reducing costs for the end user, you know, at a lower, with, with less sort of resource needed upfront, high-efficiency natural gas equipment is super, super useful for that. And there's a lot of existing funding streams right now to do that. In fact, through the bipartisan infrastructure law, all the weatherization, weatherization guys, what is it, nine billion more dollars, every state, their budget for upgrading low-income homes has gone through the roof to, to do that, and, and most weatherization agencies that do HVAC or heating stuff, they're all working with natural gas. Most of them don't, they can't do electrification, so it's like this.
What, I guess my, well, my point is a little different. My point was that Richlands has its own utility, okay? Electric, as you know. What I was speaking of, or what my thoughts were, that are there any grants, like we, to build a plant, a gas-fired plant, maybe a five meg, that we could use to distribute and lower our costs for electricity? That was my point. Not, you know, each homeowner. I'm talking about the town as a whole, having its own generation of power by gas.
Distribution and transmission level?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so there is, there's, there's the Department of Energy, and it can be used for natural gas. It's not going to be at, it can be used for electric or gas, whatever. It'll be a little less competitive issue, you can imagine, but, but if, if your end result is reducing the cost, especially for disadvantaged, the low-income communities, it's probably still really competitive. And there's a lot of money out right now for, well, there's just one big round of money specifically for utilities, whether they're investor-owned or municipal, or even like rural electric ops, for sort of those sorts of infrastructure upgrades, for the grid programs, the grid reliability and infrastructure program, I think. So, they're looking at trying to help people, especially folks that have limited resources, upgrade, you know, transmission and distribution systems in a way that leads to lower, lower income, or, or, you know, lower community, different ways.
I guess that's my point. I mean, from my point of view, that's the direction Richlands should go, since we have an abundance of gas, and that would be a great direction, if we could get grants for generation of our own power through gas, okay? But thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
There's absolutely some, there's some stuff available for that, so, and it's going to be in waves. So, right now, we've just gone through one round of that, and there's another round that's supposed to be for rural stuff, they can do some of that stuff, and there should be more around, probably twice a year for the next three or four years, until they run out of this money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. I would like to suggest-
That's a good answer.
Sir?
Got any other questions?
Right now, I believe we're okay. May I suggest that we say goodbye to you, but we will be in touch. We need to reschedule, we'll have to work on that, and we'll talk amongst ourselves, and we'll ask our town manager to be in touch with you to reschedule. I think we've asked all the questions I know to ask at this point. Is council amenable to that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay.
Hello?
Uh, yes, we're saying goodbye.
Okay, that's good. So, you, you see who runs that part of the program anyway for us? Anyway, okay.
Have a nice evening. We'll talk with you soon. It's our pleasure. Have a good evening and be safe. Thank you. All right. You want to disconnect them? Bye-bye. All right. Okay. So, there's no point going on right now, in my personal opinion. I can't hear very well. We do need slides. We're all in agreement. Shay is here as a member of the electric committee, as are two council members, and if everybody's amenable to that, I think we'll have to ask our manager to be in touch and schedule another meeting with them, and I would suggest probably at our April meeting. Is that acceptable to everybody? Is it accepted, everybody? We don't need a motion on that. Thank you, sir. I, I need a ten-minute recess. I need to be excused. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Jan.
Bye.
Thank you.
Shay? Shay?
Too many council members, because it couldn't, the sunshine laws.
The sunshine laws.
So moved.
Laura makes the motion to return to open session. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Jan makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, Susan, would you please take a roll call vote?
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Now, the chair will entertain a motion that, hold on, let me read it, that we were in closed session for personnel pursuant to code section 2.2, 3711A1 for personnel, that no business other than personnel was discussed. Is there a motion to such?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Rick makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Laura makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, I would ask a roll call vote. Susan, thank you.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes, thank you.
The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is interim manager comments. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing that I want to talk about was the fiscal year '23, '24 proposed budget. I've talked with the board and I think it's, right now it's your direction that we are going to have a proposed budget that we're going to deliver to you April, on the April 11th meeting. And we've postponed, or we've canceled the budget workshops for now until you have an opportunity to get that proposed budget that staff and I will prepare for you. And then if you so choose, then we can schedule a budget workshop after the April 11th meeting. I just wanted to make sure that that was still okay and that's your direction.
As I'm speaking on behalf of myself, it's fine. Laura, are you good with that?
Yes, sir.
We're just taking a consensus. Jan?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
I think it's unanimous consensus, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Town manager position, I just wanted to make you aware, and I sent everybody an email earlier. I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at it, but the RFP for the executive search committee, we put that out, or the executive search firm, we've put that out. And we have reached out and let, you know, potential firms know that that RFP is active on the website. So that's up and going. We're looking forward to hopefully getting some feedback here in the near future, and we'll let you know as soon as that happens.
Thank you.
The other item that I have is a budget amendment for your consideration. It was council's direction at the last regular meeting that we go ahead and we pay the remainder of what we had promised to our pop-up winners. We were able to do that utilizing pop-up funds with, for Bleachy Mama. We were able to do that. We were unable to do that for Ms. Horton for a variety of reasons. Those funds come with a lot of strings attached because they come from different pots, some of that from grant funding. We would be able to go ahead and pay her the remaining balance of $2,852.04 if council would be agreeable to doing a budget amendment tonight from the general fund, then we would move that to town council funds and be able to cut that check tomorrow.
I have one question.
Yes, Mayor.
Ron, had Ms. Horton supplied all the documentation that she needed to, to be able to pay for, be able to be paid for the pop-up funds?
Yeah, she, this is not a refusal on her part. She's just provided everything she has to date, Mayor.
Well, that's all I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
So that's why we're having to maybe rely on town funds?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just making sure.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Yes, I got a question. I thought we had that money set aside to do this.
You have to direct that.
Sure, and to answer your question, councilman, we do. However, where she was, where she had to close, she's not able to produce any more receipts or expenses because she's closed her doors at this time. So the direction was by the board is to go ahead and pay that in full. Unfortunately, we can't do that out of pop-up funds because she's not going to have any more expenses to show. And we can't cut that, those checks out of those particular funds because they have, there's specific requirements that we have to meet to issue it out of the pop-ups.
So she's done closed, so she's out of business?
Yes, sir.
One question. We gave $25,000 from the budget to that pop-up, didn't we? Or, okay, where is that at?
I imagine it's still in the pop-up funds.
Is that a separate account?
Yeah, but what he's saying is she's done closed. She cannot produce no more receipts to get this money out of that because it's got strings attached to it. So what he's asking us to do is take it out of the general budget fund and give it to where we want that done. I don't know if that's right.
Well, I'm just looking for your direction, okay? I understand that I want to.
I'm thinking if we, are we going to leave those funds forever in pop-up? And I thought we were thinking about doing away with pop-up.
I would, I think everybody knows how I feel about how pop-up has went thus far. It's not that I think it's a bad idea. I think the execution was rushed and et cetera, et cetera. I, if those funds sit in there, I think we're looking at a year at least before we move forward with that. But I, I don't know how we're going to divide the funds back up because like you said, council, previous council had given $25,000 for it. They, the, I think VCC has been spent at this point, but I think, what was it? I think VCC solicited from Thompson Charitable Foundation, a couple of different places. I'm fine with giving that back, but my deal about all that, my thought on it, and I'm only one person, is I think when we get a new town manager, that's going to be something to talk about there. I'm not going to look at an interim manager and say, hey, can we percentage this fund out? And you know what I'm saying? That's, so that's just where I am with it.
Any other thoughts and we can bring it to a vote.
I just have a super quick question about clarification. You said like we have documentation or we don't?
No, we do. There was two drawdowns.
Yeah.
So she was, she had, there was two payments. She submitted everything, and I think if you want to add to it, feel free, Susan, because you know better than I do. But she did submit everything. did submit everything she has. Now, and we've paid out everything that we can out of the pop-up because those, what she submitted, those did meet the criteria to pay out of the pop-up funds. However, this, the remainder, which is the 285204, she's not going to be able to show any expenses because she's had, she's had to close.
So she has not been able to submit and will not be, am I correct, Ron? Has not and will not be able to submit any receipts to, for the balance because she's out of business? And the only way the pop-up funds can be used is with the proper documentation receipts. Is that correct?
That is exactly correct. A very specific expenses related to the business because there's grant monies and different things in there that we just can't. And then, you know, if we were audited and they would catch it, obviously, we want to make sure that we're doing things right and we would probably have to pay that back anyway. And I certainly don't want to do things when I know that's contrary to what we need to do as far as good practices.
One question. She doesn't have $5,000 worth of receipts while she was in business?
She was in business for a short time. And I can tell you that when I called her and, you know, she, what she's, there's some very personal things she's relayed to me that I don't want to relay here in an open meeting. The expenses that she has with her business are still mounting up. She's just looking for the funds maybe to help with that. I feel like, and I feel like she will use the money if it's, if it's given to her to pay off those final expenses that she had related to the business. That's what was relayed to me.
And just to chime in here, just to remember, Chief Holt was not the manager when a lot of this went on, when any of this went on. So he's getting the end of it. But there were, without, I'm not trying to toss anyone under the bus, but there were other payments made out of that pop-up money that did not meet the criteria previously. Chief Holt was not here when that happened. It was, I've sat in the IDA meetings and I wish, I know Jordan has, I wish we all have sat in there and listened to the back and forth. It was a lot of confusion. And this is not, to me, budget amendment is not ideal, but these people were presented this money as, I mean, the mayor presented them a big check of $5,000 and hey, you guys won pop-up. And I think at this point, you just, we just need to make it right and kind of move on.
To be clear, it was a humongous check. It was not real money. It was photo op, okay? I don't dole out money. Thank you. Yes, and then I'll ask for a motion, if we want to do that. Go ahead, Rick.
I don't want to give the money back. I've got another idea on what we need to do later down the road. I don't want to give that back, but I want to keep it while we can get more money. So I will make the motion to do that at this point, to move the funds that you need to move to pay the lady. And that will end all pop-up Richlands?
Well, the two, yes, the two that we have currently active that are, that are talking with us, you know, and have, have did their part. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
All right, Rick makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this motion, which I don't have it in front of me. The motion is to move funds from our general budget, council budget, whatever. General budget? To amend the budget.
So it would be, it would be $2,852.04. We're going to, we're going to do that from the general fund miscellaneous account, 10-4040-519000. We're going to move that to council
Okay. Do you make that motion? He makes that motion. And who seconded it?
I did.
Laura made the second. Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, Susan, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Doug.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you, Ron.
And I think that's all for me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Attorney resolution. Okay, Mike?
We talked about this last month. Well, I guess last week now. Has everybody had the chance to look over the policy?
Yes, sir.
I would recommend that if you have any questions, let me know that, and then I can try to answer them. And then if not, we can just read the resolution.
Does anyone have any questions regarding Resolution 2023-02-01? It's about virtual meetings. Would Council like me to read this, please? It's a public document, this, the resolution?
Yes, please.
Give this, all right, Resolution R, let me get some water, I'm sorry, just a minute, please. Okay. Resolution R 2023-02-01. Whereas, public bodies are encouraged to, I, provide public access both in person and through electronic communication means to public meetings, and to, provide avenues for public comment at public meetings when public comment is customarily received, which may include public comments made in person or by electronic communication means and other methods, and, whereas the Virginia General Assembly has established criteria by which individual members of a public body may use remote participation instead of attending a public meeting in person if, in advance of the public meeting, the public body has adopted a policy which sets forth the protocol governing remote participation in such meetings. And, whereas the Council for the Town of Richlands finds it prudent and necessary to adopt such a policy to ensure the uninterrupted and regular conduct of its council meetings in order to conduct and attend to the ongoing business of the operation of the town government. Therefore, be it resolved at the Council of the Town of Richlands, Virginia, that the Town Council hereby adopts of the attached virtual meeting and remote participation policy regarding its holding of public meetings of the Town Council and its attendance by its individual council members in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Code 2.2-3711, et cetera, sequence of the Virginia Code of 1950 as amended. Okay. The resolution having been read, should we entertain a motion to pass this?
I will make that motion.
Laura makes the motion to pass Resolution R 2023-02-01. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Rick makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no further discussion. Susan, roll call vote, please.
Okay, I'm going to go the order that it's on here. Jordan?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Okay, let me look at my agenda. Okay. Our next meeting of the Richlands Town Council will be held at its regular meeting date of April the 11th, as of this evening, as of April the 11th, with our regular scheduled meeting at 6 o'clock here in the Town Hall chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Yes.
I think it's before you adjourn, I know it was the wish maybe of Council, and I just want to make it clear, are we still going to have the, the meeting at 5 o'clock with the Electrical Committee? I didn't know if the Board wanted to be here for not, or if we just wanted to have the members for that here?
On the?
The 11th.
11th. I think we can, you can include that in an email, but our regular meeting will be at 6 o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, it does. Thank you.
So, thank you. If Council will say just a second after this motion, I don't want to mess up on the agenda. There's a motion and a second, is that right? Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion. All in favor of adjournment, say aye really loudly.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Council, I would like to remind you that we have for us right here. So these are invitations to the Tassaway County Chamber of Commerce Dinner. It's any membership dinner is Friday, April 25.